This time we'll call the special budget session to order. And at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to the county manager. Brian?
Yes, sir.
The lights aren't down for a reason. We randomly moved them so you'd be able to see a little easier.
I thought that was moving.
We were saving a little money on the electrical bill. So, a couple of things I want to do for you. I'm not gonna go through your book. I've got a presentation I'm gonna run for you, so you don't necessarily have to go through that. And there're actually gonna be two. I want to talk to you a little bit about revaluation and when we get to our revenue neutral, so that we'll have some discussion on that start with. Because that is a big piece this year in this is the 2018 revaluation cycle. So I'm gonna start off with that. So, if you don't have this, but I'll be glad to get you a copy. In general, and this is for folks to more clearly understand, revaluation. So why is revaluation conducted? First of all, it's mandated by the state. It has to be done at least once every eight years. There are some counties that do it every four years. I don't think anybody does it any less than four years because it's a rather expensive process, even when you're doing it in-house. I think for us, it was right at a little under a million dollars for us to do our revaluation this year. And we're on the eight-year cycle. The issue you run into, and I know the board looked at this, I think last revaluation, once you bump up against that eight-year cycle, you gotta revalue. You can't go past the eight years. Now, some counties will adjust that and go six, and then it gives them a little leeway to play around with. But once you hit eight, you gotta revow. And of course, it was last done in 2010 in Beaufort County.
Brian, how long did it take to do that?
It's a couple-year process.
Two-year process.
Yes, sir. And the last one was done in 2010. And remember, what a lot of folks forget is that a revaluation is a snapshot as of January 1. So it's a snapshot of what the market was January 1 of 2018 for this one. It was a snapshot of what the market was of 2010. What is the purpose of revaluation? A lot of folks have their own idea of what the purpose of revaluation is, but the reason you do revaluation is to equalize the tax base among all classes of taxable property. And what is, it does that to ensure that properties are described accurately on tax rolls, and so there's a greater equity in the assessed valuation. Because the market changes over time, and again, this, we do a snapshot, and that snapshot holds for the next eight years, or it holds until you do a new revaluation. Revaluations are not conducted to raise revenue. And what you will find in counties that, and in a lot of counties that did revaluations the last couple of years, those numbers went the other way. Because the market was still down as to where they were in 2010. So when you're looking at revaluation, a big piece of that is the sales ratio. And what a sales ratio is, it represents the comparison of property tax assessments with the actual sales price of the county in the preceding year. So we get those numbers from the Department of Revenue, and they tell us what our sales ratio is. And to explain that, a sales ratio of one means that the assessment that's been done is equal to the market. So your assessment equals the market. And that's what you're striving for in a revaluation year, that you've done a good enough job, that you've matched what your valuation is to the market. But remember, the market is constantly changing, and you're taking a snapshot as of January 1 of whatever year your revaluation is pegged at. If the number is greater than one, then that means your assessment is greater than what the market was. It means you're overvalued on the assessment as compared to what the market is. And that's what happened to Beaufort County in 2010. You were pegged about one, and then it hailed at that rate, and then the market turned down. Well, we don't go back and revalue every time something changes. You just can't afford to do that. And it is, it is something that we haven't seen in a lot of years, in that typically properties appreciate. So you get to where you're at the bottom there, where it's less than one, and the assessment is less than what the market value is. So the market's going up, and you've pegged it at your value, and the market continues to go up. But we don't go out and revalue and make folks, you know, change what they're paying in taxes. That gets pegged based on the value. So here's what, these are the sales ratios for Beaufort County. And you may have a little difficult time reading those exact numbers, but the graph, the chart will help you see that. So in 2009, in '09, your sales ratio was .6929. That means that property had appreciated, and you were 30% below what the market was. So when you revalued in 2010, you see where it went up. It was .9894, so you were somewhere close to one. The next year in '11, it went up just a little bit. In '12, it started going up. And what that means is your valuation was pegged, but the market was turning down. And when the market turns down, then your sales ratio is greater than one. And you'll see where, the worst case we had was in 2015, and we were 22.52% overvalued than what the market was. The market was correcting itself, and because revaluation pegs a number on January 1 of 2010, that's what that number was, and it didn't change. But the market changed. So, and you see as it started coming back down. In 2018, and this is the sales ratio for the previous year, so according to DOR, the 2018 number of 1.006, you were six tenths above last year. That's the 17-18 numbers, what they say. So you see, if we'd had one more year, we'd have gotten back close to one where we needed to be. But that just shows you the cycle that occurs. Now typically, that cycle is just the opposite. You'll see the numbers lower. You'll see them below one because, again, property typically appreciates. What you found out in 2010 in Beaufort County was, property was still doing pretty good when you did the revaluation. And in fact, people were doing some pretty crazy things with property back in 2010. People were selling it, people were buying it, and they were thinking they were gonna turn around and flip it and make a ton of money, and it was just gonna keep right on going. Well, when you look, when the appraisers went out and looked at the market, they were determining what the market was. So they're looking at comps, and they're doing all their stuff. So that's what they pegged it at. And then you, a couple of years later, the market turned down, it started to correct itself, and as it corrected itself, it dropped, but your valuation stays the same. So that's why you see that ride there. So the 2018 revaluation, these are the numbers that we got from the tax assessor. Based on prior year, and again, that's based on whatever the 2017 number was, and that's based on valuation. The partial account was up 158 from last time. Land value was actually down 3.59%. Building value was down a little over 7%. Mislandant improvements were down almost 5%. So the total market was down 5.44% compared to where you were in 2010. Land deferred value was up, so that meant, that means there was more deferred land, like present use value and that type. So there was more added to that. So that hurts the valuation. That takes off money from the valuation. Exempt value was down, so those properties that were exempted were down a little bit. And then the taxable value, total taxable value before relief and exclusion. So relief and exclusions are things like circuit breaker, disability, senior. So there're certain things that the state puts in there that if you meet those qualifications, you get tax relief or exemptions. So that number, and that happens every year, so we don't, that number fluctuates each year. So the taxable value that we received from the assessor was that overall, we were down 5.52%. Okay? So let's talk about what a revenue neutral calculation is. You hear a lot, you hear that word thrown around a lot, those words thrown around a lot, and a lot of people talk about them, and so let's talk through that, especially for the public's use, so that they understand what we're talking about. Revenue neutral is calc, is defined by North Carolina General Statute 159-11E. So if anybody wants to read the law about it, you can read it. It doesn't change. It is in the law. It describes exactly what you have to do. In fact, there is a spreadsheet that the local government commission posts on their website, that they send to every entity, and it's plug-and-play. They tell you what to plug in, you plug it in, and it tells you what the number is. The statutes require that that number, that revenue neutral calculation be provided to the governing board for comparison purposes when you have revaluation. And the reason you do that is, it allows for a very easy look to see what the tax rate's doing. Because of course, revaluation screws stuff up, and you gotta know which is being held constant, what's not being held constant. So it's a quick way to look and see what your tax rate's doing. The revenue neutral calculates the tax rate that's required to produce the same revenue as the prior year, and it allows for growth, for average growth. Because it wouldn't be fair if you didn't allow for that average growth. The challenge for Beaufort County, and you'll see that in your book, the revenue neutral spreadsheet that's provided by the LGC is in your book. The challenge for Beaufort County has been, over the last eight years, the average increase, the average growth in Beaufort County over the last eight years per year has been less than 1%. It's been like .9%. There've been some years where it's been negative, and there's been some years where it's been, there was one year where it was really good, 3.4 or so. But overall, it has been about .9% each year. So the growth during the time when the market turned down has been a challenge. But tax levy's pretty easy. It's not rocket science. Tax levy equals the rate times the valuation. So in a revaluation year, what revenue neutral is saying is, you gotta figure out what the levy is. So you know what the levy from the prior year is. You don't know what the rate is, and you know the valuation has changed. So you plug in the valuation, you know what the levy is, and it gives you what the new rate is. And that's to equal what you received in the prior year. It's like you hadn't had a revaluation. It's to normalize that. The other thing that people get a little confused about is, when we talk about a revenue neutral calculation and a revenue neutral tax rate, it refers to the aggregate tax burden for the entire jurisdiction. So for the entire county, that's what that number is. It's not on individual taxpayers, because your individual situation is different than anybody else's individual situation. You may have a piece of property that went up in value. You may have a piece of property that went down in value. But overall, on average, the property countywide went down a little over 5%. Now yours may have gone up, yours may have gone down. It may have stayed about the same. But on average, for all the land, it went down about 5.5%. So when you think about revenue neutral, you have to think about it as an overall, for the overall burden, not just individual taxpayers, because it will never, it'll never work out that way. So what is our revenue neutral calculation? Well, in 17-18, our valuation was $5.9 billion. We had a rate of 55 cents, produced a levy of a little over, almost $33 million. The 18-19 valuation was $5.7 billion. So you were $220, $230 million down in your valuation. That equates, in order to get 32, 772, 673, which is what your levy was last year, that revenue neutral rate is 57.19, 57.19 cents. Now, you had .9% average growth since the last revaluation, the last eight years. So you're allowed to take that growth. And to do that, the rate becomes .5770, okay? Because you're allowed to increase the rate based on that growth of .9%. Because it would normally have grown anyway, and if you're pegging it back to last year's levy, you're not taking advantage of the growth that you would normally get. So the spreadsheet allows you to do that, and it programs that in. Now, we typically stay on half-cent increments. So a 57.70 is a 58 cent revenue neutral tax rate for us.
If your value of all the property in the county went up, the rate should go down.
That's right. If the value goes up, the rate should go down. The value went down, so the rate goes up.
But the 57.19 rate without the adjustment, shouldn't the number be less than 50.5719 if it goes down?
The valuation goes down, so you've lost 200 and some million dollars' worth of valuation. So when value goes down, rate has to go up to equal the same levy.
Yeah, but .9% is a growth.
That's right. You're allowed to-
It's an increase in value.
You are allowed to use that growth, that average growth over the last eight years. So you see where you look at-
Who did those calculations?
I did those calculations.
All right, well, look, let's go through this again.
Okay.
Let's go through this again. If the rate goes up, the va, if the tax value goes up, the rate has to come down. I think you, I think you went in the wrong direction.
The tax value didn't go up. The tax value went down.
But should, but what we meant though, the 18-19 valuation would put us at 57.19 percent, cents.
That's correct.
But we take the growth and add that to the 32 million, oh, okay, all right. You take the growth-
The growth is on the rate.
You need to get me that. I need to look at that.
It's in your book.
Is it?
Okay. It's in your book. So, any other questions?
I think we pretty much had an anomaly during that period of time. I mean, we've never seen property go up the way it did.
You never seen property go down the way it did.
And then drop during that period of time, and then we've got this land platted.
Right.
And so that's really been the offset.
Right.
The upper end has really dropped. The $100,000 range has stayed constant, I believe the vast majority has dropped.
Right. So any other questions? But that's essentially your revenue neutral number. Based on the calculations, your value went down, so your rate goes up to compensate, according to the statute, and that's the number.
Okay.
All right, so we'll talk, yes, sir?
Question.
Yes, sir.
Without the three cents increase, we would have to find 1.5 roughly in the budget, the existing budget?
Yeah, typically, last year, we said that a penny was about 600. A penny now is about 550, right?
570.
570. So yes, sir. I mean, if you, and you don't have to, you don't have to, you don't have to adopt a revenue neutral rate. It's required to be shown to you for comparison purposes.
Thanks, Steve.
But if you didn't, then you would be stepping backwards.
So, like I said, not a 1.5 plus decrease in revenue.
That's correct.
Or in the budget.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So this is, according to statutes, again, we're supposed to make a budget presentation to you, to present the budget and hit the highlights, and then we go into our work sessions to talk about it. So this is the recommended budget for 18-19. Just a quick overview, it is presented as required by NCGS 159. It is balanced, and it is prepared in accordance with the policies and procedures that are outlined in the Local Government Budget and Physical Control Act. It, again, contains three sections in your book. You're aware of this. The continuation budget, which simply provides for the services that you provided last year again this year. I want to be clear about what continuation means. A lot of folks don't understand what continuation means. It simply means that unless the board tells us differently, we provide for you what it takes to do exactly the same thing next year that you're doing this year. That's all continuation means. So that's provided for you. Service expansions or anything new or different that change values up or down, that are different from what you've provided in the last year. If you put a new program in, we bring it to you as a service expansion. We say to you, you now, as a board, have the policymaking decision to look at that and determine whether you want to do it or whether you don't want to do it. We don't make those decisions for you. We provide you the information, and we give you the background on it to help you make an informed decision about what you want to do for your constituents through this budget, and that's what, that's what that does. So for us, it is the fairest way, or at least I believe in doing budgets for the number of years I've been doing budgets, I believe it is one of the fairest ways to do it, because it keeps us out of picking winners and losers. Staff's not in a position to be picking winners and losers for programs. It's the board's policy on what they want to do to get done for their constituents, because that's how you get done for the, for your constituents, what you want done through the budget. It's simply that. And we provide for you what it takes to do the exact same thing you did last year, and if you say to us, we don't want to do that, we want to take this out, then we do that. But otherwise, we present for you what it takes to do the same thing as you, next year as you did this year, and then we show you the differences. And then, of course, a fee manual is also attached. We show you a fee manual every year. And the fee manual is an attempt to recover the costs associated with certain programs or certain things that are mostly driven by individual users. General tax dollars pay for general things, but we do use service fees to try to recapture some of those things, so they're not so highly subsidized by general fund tax dollars. Everybody knows that July 1 to June 30 is our budget period. The process by which we do that is, we have the planning retreat that we've been through. We do our internal budget work with our department heads, and to, so the public understands that as well. It is not a cut and paste, one on top of the other. Department managers go through their budgets individually. They present those. They look back at where they are, they look where they need to roll up at the end of the year. Those are presented, and the finance officer and I sit down with each one of those department heads, and we individually go through those budgets, line item by line item. Look at them, look at where they think they are, look at where we see the trends going, and where we think they need to be. And to be able to determine, you know, what it takes to continue to provide that exact level, that exact same level of service. So let it be clearly known that every line item is reviewed by department heads, then by the county manager and the finance officer. And we look at those, and we cut them, or we add them, however it needs to be, to be able to do what we need to do. Now we do a presentation to you. The budget workshops will be this week and next week. It'll be a public hearing. It's required by law, anytime you have a budget, to have a public hearing, to hear the views of the public on your proposed budget. That's at the June regular meeting. And then you have in your schedule to adopt that budget at a special second-June meeting. It's the second week in June, the second Monday in June is the way it is scheduled right now. So overall, the 17, the 18-19 recommended budget maintains all services and programs that you had last year. It maintains the prior year fire and EMS tax district levels, no changes there. It does make adjustments for the 2018 revaluation. So the recommended ad valour rate is at 60 cent per $100 of assessed valuation. That is 3 cents based on the revenue neutral calculation that brings you back to a revenue neutral number, and then 2 cents are required to maintain the current level of provided The general fund this year is projected to be $56.7 million. That's a decrease of a little over $1.1 million from the prior year, which is about a 2% decrease. Prior year was a decrease, or this current year was a decrease from the prior year, recommended, and this year's recommended budget is another decrease based on what you had from last year. So budgets are being scrutinized, and reductions are being made. This year, we've recommended an appropriation of about $251,000 in fund balance. That is a decrease of $793,000 from the prior year budget. We fully intend, if that number stays about 251, we fully intend to revert that amount of money back to the general fund at the end of the budget, simply through lapse salaries and cost savings that we find throughout the year. We believe that that is very doable. If you look at the fund balance, what we anticipate, if all, and remember when we talk about expenditures of fund balance, if you adopt, if you adopt this budget the way it is right now, and it appropriates $251,000 in fund balance, when we do our calculation, we say that you spend every bit of that. So when we look at this next calculation that shows on June 30 of 2019, when we think, when we finish up this recommended budget on June 30 of 19, we, our belief is that we will have spent everything that was in that budget, and we will have received everything that's in that budget. So we show that calculation being about $15.67 million in fund balance at the end of this recommended budget year. That's 27.63% of expenditures. So that's up a bit from where you were. And that's simply a function of the budget. When the budget gets smaller, that number goes up a little bit, because it's a percentage of expenditures. So revenues, property taxes are a little over $34 million on a 60 cent per $100 worth of valuation. The valuation is $5.7 billion. The real property valuation is down 5.5%. And we assume a 97.92% collection for real and personal property. That's based on last year's audit and by, by Local Budget and Physical Control Act. And that's what you're limited to. You can't, you can't say, oh, we're gonna collect 100% of our tax collections off of real and personal, because you're not going to. So they make sure that you're, that you, that the highest number you can use, and you don't have to use that number, you could use a lower number if you wanted to, but the highest you can use is what is the audited number from the prior year financial audit. So that's 97.92%. We do assume 100% on motor vehicle, because for you to get, for you to get a motor vehicle tag nowadays, you have to pay your, you have to pay your taxes first. That was the tax and tag program that was put in place several years ago, and I know the Association of County Commissioners worked really, really hard to do that, to get that in place, and it has paid off tremendously in benefits for counties. Because unfortunately, there was a lot of ways to play games with motor vehicle tax, and a lot of folks understood how to do that, and a lot of folks took advantage of it. So this is, and we always show you this, it's in your book, and we talk about where you are on the tax rate compared to what year you are in revaluation. So you'll see our 18-19, we're recommending 60 cent. That's the first year evaluation. You'll see last year it was 55. And then you go back and you can look historically at where you've been on your tax rate. Eight, nine, nine, 10, you were at 60 cent, and then you had the revaluation, and property values were up compared to where they were on your valuation. So your property, so your property tax went down because you had a higher valuation. And then over the years, it's moved up a little bit, and now the recommended is 60 cent, and 3 cent of that is based on property values being down, and the revenue neutral calculation bringing that tax rate up to equal the same amount of levy. These are your surrounding counties. We provided this for you last year. This is an updated one for this budget. You will see that we've actually decreased a little bit in our, in our ranking, which is a good thing. You'll see the sales ratio, you'll see the county, the tax rate, the sales ratio, and then what's called the effective tax rate. Because if you have a sales ratio that's above one, it means that you're essentially taxing people. That effective rate shows that the tax is a little higher because the valuation in the county is above what the market is. When you have a number that's below zero, then your effective tax rate is actually less than what your tax is. So you can see, and what that does is, that allows us to talk apples to apples across every county in North Carolina. You look at their effective rate, and that depends upon what year of valuation they're in, what revaluation year they're in, and what their sales ratio is. So that gives you the effective rate. And you'll see that the rank 100 is the most, is the highest taxed county in North Carolina. Washington County is number 96. Beaufort County is number 31. These are the counties that surround us. Martin at 85, Hyde at 64, Pitt at 55, Pamlico at 36, Beaufort at 31, and the only one of our neighbors who is less than us is Craven County. So on the revenue side, you'll see our sales and other taxes are at $9.3 million. That's up in the current year. Of course, as you recall from last year, that's based on the broad, that's because of a broader base of taxes, sales taxes, that the General Assembly has made. So you're taxing more things, more services are now being taxed, so that has gone up. Our estimate for 18-19 is that it'll be up about 4%. But what we do anticipate is that that trend will start to level out next year. That, that growth on that trend cannot continue- growth on that trend cannot continue. I mean, it would be nice if we continue with that, but, but the, in our area, the economy's got to get a little better. And, and once we, once the base is solid, all, all we can do is look at historical numbers when it comes to, to sales tax. We don't get the, we're not privy to the, to the formulas and the calculations that Department of Revenue uses to figure out, you know, what their estimates are. We just know what we get. And we've got a, about a four-year, four, five-year running spreadsheet that shows us all our different articles, 41, 42, 44s, where they are for each month and each year. And we just look at those trend lines. And anytime the General Assembly adjusts that base and starts either taxing more services or less taxes on services, it kind of resets our baseline, kind of screws up our numbers. So again, we just have to look at history on it. It's not a straight calculation. On, on the other, other part of revenues is the restricted and intergovernmental. That's a little over $9.8 million. It's projected lower in 18, 19. That's mostly due to program changes at DSS. Childcare payments are running through NC FAST. Medicaid payments, some of the Medicaid payments are run through NC TRACKS. So those numbers aren't reflected locally. So it decreases that overall number. Of course, these, you know, intergovernmental revenues are subject to change over the year, depending upon what programs a state has and federal government has, whether they throw some additional money and some things, or they expand services. So those are apt to change, but they are down, and it's mostly related, or overwhelmingly related to the changes in DSS. And of course, if the revenue size down, the expenditure size down as well, because they match out. On the license and fees and other, license fees and others, $2.3 million projected. That's a significant decrease from the prior year. And that's simply due to the one-time installment note for the $3 million financing package. We had to show that money coming in last year, and it's not there this year. It came in, it had to be moved back over, but it comes out this year because we're not borrowing again this year. But if you look at it, if you take that out of last year's calculation, and look at this year's calculation, you'll see that license and fees are slightly upward. So it's not as bad as it seemed. The 3 million that gets thrown in there just kind of skews everything. But when you pull it out, there's a slight upward movement in license or in fees that we're projecting for the next year. Investment earnings are projected at $220,000. That's a projected increase for this year due to investment changes that were made back in 16, 17. Anita's done a great job in managing that portfolio and putting our idle funds to, to work for the county and, and making money. You all well know, if you follow the market, that interest rates are projected to rise in March of this year. The feds raised the quarter, the rate a quarter point to a range of 1.5, 1.75%. Published, published reports say that they're anticipating to raise it again two more times in 18. So the anticipation is that we will be around 2.25 going into 2019. So that helps them put the brakes on the economy, cool the economy down a little bit. Interest rates a little bit slows down the gas. Helps us on interest, helps us on interest earnings. And it shows that the economy is, is growing. New line item for us in this year's budget is administrative charge of about $304. That is new this year, and it is charged to the enterprise funds. Now, you may ask yourself, why is that? The reason is enterprise funds use services provided by the general fund. Legal, HR, my time, finance time, all those, you know, we don't, we don't have a separate accounting for that. They use those funds, they use those services. And when you, when you don't account for that, then the general fund is subsidizing the enterprise fund. So what we've done is we've gone in and we've looked at specific units. So the example I show here is, is the IT example. We have a base IT charge that, that we have a contract with our IT provider that charges us a certain amount of money to handle all of our IT services. Well, prior years, you know, there are computers at the water department, there are computers in that enterprise fund, and they have just been using that service. So what we did was we looked at, what is the basis? The basis is each computer. So if you have 100 computers, and five of them are being used by an enterprise fund, then five of that 100 ought to be charged to that enterprise fund. Otherwise, the general fund is subsidizing the enterprise fund, and the, and the rate payers in that enterprise fund are getting a free ride. And that's not what an enterprise fund is designed to do. An enterprise fund is designed to cover its costs based on its user fees. So that's another method that we've put in to try to make it, to, to decrease the subsidy that in prior years has been paid by the general fund to enterprise funds. And we're thinking, we're getting pretty close with that. Again, we appropriate, we're, we're projecting appropriating 251,000 and so. And we've talked about it before, it's a decrease, and, and that's where you see the, the percent of expenditures. That's what it looks like on the, on the graph, on the pie chart. You'll see that, if I remember correctly, and we talked about this last year, that the way, the General Assembly's been pretty clear over the years, they were really clear several years ago, that they thought property taxes in the counties were too low, and that they ought to be, they ought to be coming up. And that they continue to push more and more stuff down to the counties. And I believe if you, from last year, I think property taxes accounted for about 58% of our budget. This year, in our projected, in our recommended budget, accounts for 60% of your budget. So that piece of pie gets wider and wider. And that's not a, that's not just a coincidence. That's, that's done by, that's done by design. But you'll see how that all shakes out. The majority of our funding comes from property taxes, and then a small amount from investment earnings, restricting intergovernmental, licenses is the blue, is the yellowish piece, and then sales and other taxes is at 16%. And this is where your expenditure side hits. I always like to show it to you this way, high to low in the, in the different cost centers. Education, $18.4 million. Human Services, which is DSS Health Department, $15.3 million. Public Safety, $11.8 million. And then General Government, and then Community Services. So those are the big ones. And, and that's, that's pretty general across the state. The numbers may fluctuate a little bit, but if you look at the percentages, the majority of all counties, their percentages kind of stay about that same area, or that, that list generally looks about the same. Sometimes what they may call Community Services may be a little different. But typically, you'll see it. Obviously, education will always be number one. Human Services is typically always number two, and Public Safety is typically always number three. So in our General Government piece, and that's the way it's listed in your book, so I started back from General Government, not from the very top. It's a decrease overall from the prior year. So our General Government expenditures are down 5.6%. Tax Assessor's Office is under General Government. Now, it's up. And when you look at that in your book, you'll see that it's up. But that's because we moved three positions out of planning, three land records positions out of planning, and moved them back over to the assessor where they, where they should be. So that shows his budget going up. But again, overall, the, the General Government Cost Center is down 5.6%. The Tax Collectors Department is down, because you'll remember, we eliminated a position through attrition there. We had a, we had an employee leave and go to work, actually in Pitt County. And we didn't, we didn't fill that position, and instead, we put in a lockbox service. So that will save us a significant amount of money and, and help us there. Elections is down because there's no municipal election next year that we, that we have. Register of Deeds is up a little bit. And remember with the, with Register of Deeds, there's a percent, there's a portion of the deed stamp, or the deed, the cost of a deed, when you go in and you record a deed, there's a certain amount of that money that goes into what's called an automation fund. And those are restricted monies that go to the Register of Deeds. They can only be used for automation services, like to buy computers and, and scanning projects and those kind of things. So that's why that's up. The funds, the revenue side of that is coming out of those restricted automated funds. And it shows, it shows as an increase in the expenditure side. So, but those are not general fund tax dollars that are, that are causing that to go up. Maintenance building his grounds is up slightly, is up a little bit. That's for furnishing the Financial Services Center and for the horn building repairs. You'll recall that when you bought that building, you took some credits on that. And, and we've got to make those improvements, make those fixes that you took on that, because you took that off the, took that off the sales price. The other departments that are in General Government are flat, or, or less than, less than zero. In the Human Services, again, this is decreased by a million, about a million six, or 9.8%. So a pretty significant decrease there. But it is driven by the, the DSS changes for NC FAST and NC TRACKS. In the Beaufort Area Transit System, you'll recall, there is an increase in that line item. That's an increase of $52,500. That is the, that is the final year of the two-year adjustment that was approved by the Board of Commissioners last year. And that was to help eliminate the subsidy that was being provided by BCDC, the Beaufort County Developmental Center, to the, to the BAT system. All other departments in Human Services have decreased, and that's Veterans and, and Health Department. Community Services are down by about $192,000, or about 10%. That's driven by the elimination of the Planning Director's Position. Those services are now contracted with the local COG, and then the movement of the three positions from planning to the Assessor's Office is what drives that. Education expenditures there. We have maintained in our budget, the Beaufort County School System, their funding level from 17, 18, that funding level was maintained. The Beaufort County Community College is just slightly lower from last year. And the reason that it's just slightly lower is because they put in, under a continuation piece, a new campus police officer. And because there was discussion with the board and, and in the budget about SROs, School Resource Officers, and that is a service expansion, we pulled out the additional campus police officer request and made that a service expansion as well, because they should be dealt with essentially the same way by the board. So we felt that was a fair way to do that. We shouldn't automatically fund one of them and not automatically fund the others. The board needs to get the opportunity to look at that and make that policy decision based on where you want to go. Public Safety is up overall by $349,000, or about 3%. That's driven in part by emergency management replacing a vehicle. When you, when you replace a vehicle in a small department like that, you, it drives things up. Animal Control are, are replacing some cat kennels, or cat, yeah, cat kennels that are due to state inspection requirements. We used to be able to get away with, with using wooden, wooden and laminate kennels. But because they, they have the ability to soak up things, and you can't get them clean, the state inspection folks tell us we have to get rid of those. And so we're, we will be buying some, some stainless steel kennels there that will, that we will never have to worry about. They'll be sanitized very easily. We have increased the jail safekeeping funds by $150,000 based on historical use of that. And we've increased the metal examiner funds by $25,000, which is pretty significant. You, you are aware that counties are required to pay for medical examiner cases that occur in your county. And there have been a slew of those in the last year. And we have to pay for those, and so we have to budget for them. So any, typically, any unattended death that occurs outside of a facility typically requires a, a medical examiner autopsy and, and review by them. And you, statute, are required to pay for that. So we had to bump that by about $25,000. And that's what your pie chart looks like. Obviously, education's the big one. Human Services next. Public Safety, those, those big three, and how that shakes out. The Enterprise Funds. You have two enterprise funds, the Water Fund and Solid Waste Fund. This is the Water Fund. It's about seven, it's recommended about $7.3 million. The budget consolidates the seven water districts into a single operational water district using an interlocal agreement between the county and the districts. Bob Jessup with Sanford-Holzhouser is putting that interlocal agreement together. He is, he is a bond counsel and has looked at all that and says that's the way to do that. And we will have that for you at your June meeting to, to proceed with that. But we've incorporated that into this budget. It also, this budget also incorporates a new rate study. My understanding, there's, there's never been a rate study done on, on the districts. Well, this is a rate study that looks at those, what they need to be in order to maintain the system. And, no, let me later. The, it incorporates that new rate study, and it takes the rates, because there was a concern, we obviously didn't want to, we didn't want to change rates too fast. So it incorporates that rate change over a five-year period, where when you get to the end of five years, everybody's paying the uniform rate per class. So residential, everybody in residential is paying the same rate, minimum and, and per 1,000. And then the industrial or business are, are in a different class. It also establishes a formal 10-year CIP for the entire system. There was, we didn't have a CIP before either. So, you know, the, I know the question has come up about rates. Well, rates are going to go up. I guarantee you rates are going to go up. They have to go up. They're, they have to go up because costs to do things are, you know, gas is going up, chemicals are going up, electricity is going up. All those things are going up. But this, this consolidation does what we've been directed by the board to do, and that is make a uniform rate across all the districts, and have a system that allows you to pay for and maintain the system over the next 10 years. And you've got a rate structure that does that. And, and you can watch it, and you can see it, and you're not making arbitrary decisions based on what you, based on some crazy number out there. This gives you those numbers, and we will watch those each year, readjust. We'll plug in, we'll plug in solid numbers each year, and we'll show that trend, and we'll see where we are. We feel confident that, that these are strong numbers, and that the math has been done right. And again, we, it's what we do when we look at those. We take those financial numbers and plug in the real numbers at the end each year, and then see what the trend line does to make sure that we're within those, within those parameters. This also establishes that about $380,000 of that, of those revenues will go back to the fund balance reserve that was established to help subs, to help stabilize the system and, and keep there from being any large rates, rate swings. Solid Waste is your last enterprise fund. It's projected at about $3.3 million. It's a 4.89% increase that we're projecting. There's no change in the, in the per parcel user fee, utility fee. It's simply that we've now, with, with the board's clarification on the, on the, on who is charged, we've seen that pick up now that, that, that the entities are being charged appropriately. So that's where that increase comes from. So the $145 per parcel is maintained. And remember, that's a utility fee. It's not a tax. It's just like water. It's just like sewage. It's just like electricity. You are paying a user fee for that. It is not charged to vacant land or to parcels that have a recognized full-service solid waste provider. When, when I say recognized full-service solid waste provider, that means a provider who is paying the tipping fees. Because everybody else in the county isn't paying the tipping fees, you're paying the tipping fees. And that's been corrected prior, from, the corrected prior exempted properties have helped drive that number up. So just as a reminder, remember, all residential solid waste costs are covered by the county and as part of that contract. If you are living in this, in a municipality, and they pick your trash up, and you say, hey, I'm getting my trash picked up for $15 a month. Well, you are paying for the labor to go and pick up your trash. You are not paying for the tipping fees. The tipping fees are paid for by the county, and they come out of that $145 per parcel fee. So for businesses, they're required to, to have a, a service that picks it up and dumps it and pay the entire fee. So they're paying the full ride. So that's why they're exempted from that. You also are paying for 11 convenience sites and a transfer station. And then, of course, this includes a general fund transfer to pay for the services, just like we did in the Water Fund. So that's pretty much, in general, the, the, the numbers pieces. Just for the schedule, tonight, you do the recommended budget presentation. We start in workshops. This Thursday, the 7th, we'll start with general fund. On next Monday, a week from tonight, on the 21st, we'll finish up general fund and start with the enterprise funds. And we'll go through those in, in as great a detail as you want to go through those. On Tuesday, the 22nd, we start into service expansions. Those are county service expansions that, that may Those are county service expansions that there may be recommendations. Just to give you an example of some of those service expansion recommendations, there's an expansion recommendation in there from the facilities study that was done. The board funded a facilities study this year that was done. What it shows is over the next 20 years, there's about $28 million worth of work that needs to be done to the facilities in Beaufort County to maintain and keep them. And we actually took out the, what they had said you needed to put sprinklers in every building you had. We actually took that out. So it's still about $28 million what that, what that was showing. We show a service expansion. I think that when it was all said and done, if you look at the number, it would take about two and a half, three cents to fund that with what they said you needed to do. We've actually showed the service expansion to say, take one penny, take one penny and dedicate that as a dedicated revenue stream to facilities and facility maintenance and then, and then work that. Another service expansion we've recommended in there or shown to you is a penny for school resource officers. You could put a, you've got to have six in the, in the remaining schools plus one at the community college. So it'd be a total of seven, but for a penny, you could put one in every, you could, you could do that and then in the next year, it would, it would drop to half that cost because the first year cost includes equipment and vehicle and those kind of things. So those are some of the service expansions that we're showing you, some of those big ticket items. You know, those are things you need to look at and review. We do those studies to see what it, see what it looks like and what it takes to put in some long-term planning tools so that we don't find ourselves behind the eight ball after a few years of not doing what we should be doing. So they're in there for your review. Those will be county service expansions and outside agency service expansions. And remember, the way that works is that there's an agency that comes in and says they want additional funding, then you provided them this year, then they come in and they make a pitch to you and they say, this is why I need it, this is why I want it. And you make a decision as to whether you want to do that or not. If there's any new requests for funding, if an agency who has not been funded by the board before comes in and they're legally able to be funded by the board, they serve a public purpose and you could fund them, then they're going to come and make a pitch to you. Nobody just slides into the budget. They come through you first. So then on Thursday, the 24th, we have the last night to finalize the budget, wrap it up, see where you want to be. And then Monday, June the 4th, it's your regular meeting. You'll have the public hearing. You're required to have a public hearing on the budget and receive comments. And then it is scheduled for a special meeting on June the 11th, the second Monday in June to adopt the budget. So that is the schedule that we get from, from there. If there are any questions, I'll be glad to answer those. Otherwise, I'll just, I've got a summary to wrap up with you. And so in general, and I think this is not something we haven't, you know, we've talked about this last year. There are many challenges that Beaufort County faces, not only last year, this year and in the upcoming years. But this budget continues those county-provided services and operations and it does require a two-cent adjustment to be able to continue those. It also includes a three-cent revenue neutral tax calculation due to the 2018 revaluation process. So the recommended avalon rate is 60 cent for 100. As you know, many of the services and programs provided by the county are mandated and there's no, there's a constant challenge to provide those services and programs with decreasing revenue streams. Estate and federal programs, increased service mandates, without providing sufficient funding sources, the burden of providing these services shifts to locally generated revenues. With that shift comes a struggle to continue to provide existing local services which educate our children, ensure our health and safety, provide a safety net for those in need and improve the quality of life for those in dire situations. There are no easy answers when it comes to debating such policy matters. You know that local and state economies in this upcoming year will play an important role in the performance of this budget. Not telling you anything you don't know that we've been slow to come out of the recovery. We're slowly digging our way out and things are getting a little better, but we still need a little more time and we've still got to keep moving to fully recover. The actions of the General Assembly will play an incredible, have an incredible impact on this budget and what they believe they should pay for when it comes to education, social services and public health. Although this year is a short session for the General Assembly, it is anticipated that this local budget will be debated and approved before the General Assembly has finished their second year state budget adjustments. I don't know if they've ever finished up by the time and been out of there by the time budgets were done locally. That time difference forces the board to anticipate changes from the state that have been finalized and make for, make for a lot of uncertainty. This especially is true for funding and retaining school safety and security. As you well know, the governor is having that discussion, the General Assembly is having that discussion. My recommendation to you, and I know you have had that discussion, and as we go through the budget, that's something we want to consider, but made a couple of calls to the association asking them where they believe the state's going to wind up on that. Unfortunately, the state doesn't pat you on the back and say, good job and we're going to pick up some of that funding that you already did to provide certain services. So I would caution you to not jump too fast on some of those, especially with the governor saying he's going to fund it, the General Assembly saying they're going to fund it. They're going to fund it somewhere. What, what I would caution you is, is let's don't jump out too fast and fund too much because the state would say, thank you for doing that and move right on. They wouldn't, they wouldn't say, let us pay you back. So rely upon the state to do what the state said the state was going to do is what I would, hopefully you would get as a takeaway from that. Again, a big thank you to our staff, our department heads for coming and bringing budgets together that were put together based on the direction they'd been given and the policy direction you'd given them. I think they, again, this year, did an excellent job in bringing together a budget for which you can clearly understand and from which you can debate policy. And for the Finance Department staff, they, again, as always, have done just an absolutely fantastic job in putting the budget together, crunching the numbers, spending a lot of late nights, a lot of long hours. And I really appreciate all the hard work they've done. They have, as always, have done a fantastic job. But it is truly my privilege to work with such great people. And I want to say that every year, that it is my belief that people who work in local government do so for a reason. It's because they want to give back. They could probably go other places and make a whole lot more money than what they're making. They could certainly go other places and not take as much abuse as they do in certain times. But they, they do what they do because they want to help people and they want to give back to their community. And I am very privileged and honored to work with them and I count myself blessed to be able to do that. So with that, I appreciate your time. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to take them. Otherwise, I look forward to seeing you Thursday as we sit down to go over General Fund.
5:30. 5:30.
5:30.
Is it 5:30?
How do we get a copy of this presentation?
I can send it to you and...
Yeah, if you want, email me a copy of it.
Glad to. And we'll put it out there. Any other questions?
Go ahead.
Ryan, I'd like a copy of both.
Okay, yeah, I'll send the board, I'll send the board both of them.
Both of them.
Can you go back to the date slide?
Sir?
Let me ask the slide before this.
The dates.
17, 21, 22 and 24. It's the, the expansion is going to be on the 22nd.
It's Tuesday, the 22nd.
Education, when do you think that will be?
Education is, you know, we're going to start General Fund on the 17th, on this Thursday. We'll go through General Fund. I'm not sure exactly how far we'll get. Typically, I think the education piece is a little bit later and it may end up on Monday, but it depends upon how deep we get into that conversation, how many questions you get to ask and whether we have all the answers for you or we can find some.
A lot of workshops I had down at 5 o'clock.
I was thinking it was 5.
And it was 1:00, 4:00 o'clock I thought that I had.
It's not, it's not 4.
I think the day was the only 5:30.
Yeah, they are at 5 o'clock.
They are at 5 o'clock?
Yes.
And then intermixed in that, I think I've got some board E and Rs going on too.
And they're scheduled at 5 o'clock also.
I think next Wednesday y'all, y'all will be going Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday next week.
You need to be early next Wednesday to get sworn in.
Okay.
Any other comments? If not, we're going to adjourn this meeting and we will come back on Thursday night at 5 o'clock. Have a good evening.